First thing we're gonna tackle. Serious, I'm. We'll just go in the order of the agenda, so we'll take up 2021 statewide monies with WEOA and TANF. This is a continuation of the May 18th Commission meeting where we moved this here for a little additional discussion. Commissioners, I have, I have a proposal I'd like to present, which incorporates some discussions I've had with staff and some discussions I've had with some other folks, including some executive directors of the board, but we can approach this in whatever way you want. We can all lay out our proposals, we can verify the balances. I think staff's here primarily as a resource today. If you guys have some, do you have a presentation ready or are you just here to answer questions?
Uh, we're here as a resource. We've briefed some ideas, you know, just to get thoughts.
Chairman, I would have no problem if we could all share some initiatives or ideas we have, and I wouldn't mind starting with you or Commissioner Demerson.
I'm happy to, to start out, so.
Yes, sir.
If you don't mind, I'm gonna give you, it's just simply entitled a white paper and it's a ending the middle skills gap through conference of career pathways. Kim's gonna put some here on the tables, so if your staff would like to see that while we go over this, those are available there also for general counsel and others as well. So, um, I took a look at what I believe the WEOA and, and TANF budgets to be, kinda understood how much money was available, looked at some conversations, notes of conversations that I'd had with workforce division staff and some other folks, um, and then incorporated that with a conversation that I had started with some board executive directors, um, really as far back as April. So we, we've been kinda thinking about these statewide balances and looking at our statewide initiatives, you know, for a couple of months now. I think we've all been doing that. And the thing that jumped out at me from the page is that we really talk at this agency a lot about middle skills jobs, the middle skills gap, and, and how we can get enough middle skills graduates to take those jobs. And we do in fact have a lot of programs that are really kind of focused on that task, but they do other things as well. And given that we had a balance here and understanding that staff had some, I don't wanna say wish list items, that it seems like they were hoping for the best. I, I think they had some really kinda directed strategies that they wanted to explore further. So I combined staff's ideas with my own ideas, um, and, and also with some ideas from the executive directors of some boards. Let me tell you just a little more about that and I'll tell you what's in the white paper. So in April, I sent an email to all 28 workforce boards to the executive director, asked them sort of what were some items, i- if there were a balance in either WEOA or TANF, what would they spend it on? And got, got 11 responses back from the 28 boards. There were, there were two things that jumped out as being the, the one that the most boards wanted, although it wasn't a large, wasn't even a majority, it was just a plurality of boards. Uh, one was career pathways and, and another was just sort of career and education outreach. So, uh, I was thinking about that, what they told me, looking at some of the notes that I saw from staff and realized that it might be time for TWC to consider a, a larger effort, a multi-pronged effort to really address the middle skills gap. And so what I'm proposing today is to carve out $11 million from our balances in both TANF and WEOA, proportional as to where the balance lies and how the money could be used. And with that, I would like to propose a large statewide effort to end the middle skills gap. This might be the first big step toward getting that done. And here are some of the things that I would, uh, really want us to consider, including uh, under this $11 million framework for staff to work from. So a career pathways app, um, probably have to work with a vendor, really something people could use from their phone or, or perhaps even a tablet or a laptop computer uh, to really look at career pathways and how they can either upskill or reskill or transition to a new career within the workforce while still preserving their ability to earn wages. This app would be something new that we would do, probably in addition to work in Texas and myTexas, myTexCareer.com, although it, it likely would use some similar data. And I think some of that would be driven by, uh, our ability to work with a contractor. You would wanna see job opportunity information and then you would wanna see your real-time kind of advice on how to plug into educational offerings to get there. Related to that, but, but kind of a separate category, some, some very in-depth job coaching, places where people could call, perhaps, uh, interact with online, probably call and get some job coaching advice. This would be a personal coach, this would be people-to-person contact, and it would be something that, that might even go above and beyond what we're already doing here with boards. Also within this, in, in, ending the middle skills gap, you know, I think there's some things that we're doing that we should extend, uh, some certifications for metrics users. Um, we've, we've actually talked about that one before, but then, then more training and certifications and in trades, manufacturing, high-tech, some of that might be from apprenticeship. Um, our existing apprenticeship program, which is robust at this point in terms of funding, would play itself well into, into a, a, uh, ending the middle skills gap initiative, while still doing some of the other work it does, um, as a standalone apprenticeship initiative. It's very large, very robust, I think it plugs right in. And then the last category here is just a, a kind of a mobile credential tracker. There's a lot of people doing work in this space right now, higher education core name board, there's a lot of interest in this. I, I think even TWIC has, uh, done some work in this area. I don't think that precludes us from doing the work. My proposal would be to take up these topics, assign $11 million to staff, meaning not to exceed $11 million. I think likely what would happen if we, uh, were to move forward with this today is that staff would, uh, take this framework, perhaps you might want to add to it. There may be some things you might wish to discuss taking away, but we would find a framework that, that kinda fit what staff needs to do, some things they're telling us need to be done, some things the boards have asked to be done. And we would tell them, don't spend more than $11 million. Allocate it from WEOA and TANF, which is today's discussion. But I, I would also want to advise staff, be aware of other dollars that may come available, particularly one-time dollars. And if we need to substitute those into this, you should bring that before the commission to do that. So, um, I tried to keep that brief, I tried to keep that to a summary, but I, I don't mean that to, that I don't wanna discuss it. If you have questions or comments, uh, that you'd like to make about this, um, if you, there's something you were wanting to work on, that's kinda similar to something that I'm wanting to work on, uh, I'll just say now, I'm very open to, uh, including your ideas. I'm much more serious about this framework, this larger initiative, this, this multimillion dollar initiative to end the middle skills gap. I think the tools I've included are good ones. I think if you have better ones, I would most certainly want to adopt those in there, and I think we could work together to get some things done. So, uh, I'm, I'm saying that just to say, I've made a very brief presentation here. I've given you actually what's a fairly comprehensive paper, because staff has to develop some of these things, and I'm definitely interested in your ideas concerning this.
If you want, or I can go. Okay, so Chairman Daniel, I think all the three, um, ideas that you have here fit right into what we've been talking about. I like the career pathway app, um, I'm okay with the metrics or matrix and mobile, uh, credential tracker. So, but I would like to discuss a, a couple of other ideas, but I do agree with what you laid out, and I think what I'm about to lay out may complement some of the things that you just said. And I appreciate the fact that we use the word highly skilled, uh, and, um, and, uh, of course, middle school. Let me just go over for the record, WEOA statewide funding balances. For the record, we have $9,323,388. We have $9,323,388. Nine million, three hundred and twenty-three thousand, right? And TANF, go ahead.
Commissioner, they, for WEOA, the actual amount is nine million, three hundred and fifty thousand.
Even better. Even better.
For TANF, the balance is.
Six million, six hundred. And that's not even including another resource that I know of, so, of funding.
And AEL is 3.7.
Seven million.
Yes.
But that's for later discussion, right? Okay, so, let's talk about, and I also wanna appreciate the work that staff has put into this. We did ask some questions, and particularly under the working document that we were given, the information and job connection, particular portion, where we are, and this is all, this is all going to be, as we go, I'm also going to reference the amount of money that I would like to, to use. So, keep in mind, the chairman has, has brought out three initiatives. We can negotiate and talk about the 11 million, who knows, we may be able to use it all. There is an abundance of money, and this is, uh, something that I wanna discuss with my fellow commissioners. And I think this would allow us to fine-tune some of the things that he's laid out, okay? So on the information and job connection, which you have given us as one of the documents to work with, I have an idea. I'd like to use, out of the nine million on WEOA, nine million of WEOA, I'd like to use 2 million for virtual reality technology or headset glasses or goggles to provide innovative, engaging, and scalable ways for students to explore high wage, high demand, and, uh, careers in their region. I feel that through these reality VR headsets, we can do simulations, we can also reduce the cost, time, and resources required to showcase a day in the life of a career to a student, no matter their location. By purchasing the licensing rights and VR headsets, and housing them with our educational outreach teams, which the chairman referenced that he's had, one of the, uh, one of the things that the boards had shared with him, value of these, these individuals, we can incorporate their use in workshops with students, parents, faculty, and staff in rural and urban districts across the state. And there are multiple benefits by having these headsets, that I can share at a later time. This initiative will support the work of the boards with educational outreach teams. I would also like to direct our executive director to research funding sources to purchase VR goggles or headsets for our state office education outreach team as well. That's one idea. That's $2 million, and I'm assuming that we're gonna discuss from the $9,350,000. So then let's subtract the 2 million from that, I mean, the 2 million from that. And you can certainly ask questions if you want during my discussion. Job preparedness, including short-term training. We had a section on job preparedness, including short-term training. I'd like to ask that 4 million of short-term WEOA money be used for training less than three months. For parents of children enrolled in subsidized care to connect them with a career in demand occupations. Short-term training such as apprenticeship readiness program, MC3, and something we're all familiar with, the NCCER, or any other training connections, connecting, connecting part, can any other training connecting these parents to in-demand fields? I think we talked about that in the last work session, the value of having parents going through these short-term training, especially when their kids are in subsidized childcare. So we had the 2 million subtracted from the 950, the 9,500,000, right? Was it 9,50, no, okay, 9.4. And then we had, that leaves us a balance of about 7, and then of course, this one that I just rolled out was a $4 million, that would leave us with 3 million plus 3.3 million. And then I have one more initiative, which is.
Commissioner Alvarez. So, so the, the virtual, uh, tech, uh, goggles, that was 2 million?
So, yes, no, that, yeah, that was 2 million.
And then you have another, that was 2 million?
The other one was, which is the, uh, short-term training, that WEOA short-term training, less than three months, which we've discussed, was 4 million. So that's a total of 6 from the 9.
Thank you.
And then of course, the chairman referenced the matrix, the 1.1 we could use for that, Chairman. So again, I agree with that. So that, that handles the, that's 4, 2, and 1.1 gives us a balance. If, if staff wanted to work with some of these, uh, items that you have brought forth that are for consideration, you would have 2.2 million dollars. That's still just with WEOA, I haven't even touched TANF. So you would still have your 6.6 million for TANF. All I touched was WEOA. So when the chairman wrote or ex, talked about 11 million that he'd like to roll out, you still have the 6 million from TANF, and then of course, left over, and then of course, the balance of 2.2 from WEOA. That's $8 million. Any question?
Yeah, it's a good, Commissioner Alvarez, what's your total, uh, total amount that you have?
My total amount would be 4 and 2 is 6 plus 1.1, which is something the chairman has already referenced, the mobile app, would be, uh, 7.1.
So it's about 18 million dollars that we, in total, between the 11, chairman's 11 million and your 7 million.
I, I think that some of the things we discussed could actually be blended.
So, in practice, the two suggestions that Commissioner Alvarez has, I could definitely, um, be supportive of, I might not support the dollar amounts. And, and I do wanna talk about that, I, it's, it's not a do or die proposition for me.
And I'd be willing to negotiate that.
That, that, this is, this fits into the framework that I'm suggesting. So, so let's don't, uh, I, I guess I'm taking the long way around to say, I'm not gonna worry about the totals right now. We're gonna make the totals fit how much money we have. Courtney and Chris are already calculating, they're gonna find us some more money, I'm kidding, we're gonna make them. Where we are, let's get all the ideas on the table, because th- this is two really good ideas that we just heard. Of course, I think my ideas are good, and I hope you do too, um, but, but let's get all the ideas and then, then we can start talking about money and see how this is gonna actually work.
And I would, I would agree with that. And the reason that I said, um, the, the initiatives that I rolled out just touched WEOA. And so, again, that has even, we haven't even touched TANF, we still have the 6.6, and then of course, there's still a 2.2 in WEOA after the initiatives. And again, I think some of the things that the chairman has rolled out, and I'm sure Commissioner Demerson may have some ideas, I think there's opportunities for us to blend some of the ideas that we're, we're proposing. It's just the technology that I'm, I'm, I'm reinforcing, like the headsets and, and who are the recipients of the awards they grant. So, boards would receive them, uh, career and educational outreach specialists. Funding would be available to folks that do short-term training, like, um, our apprenticeship schools, uh, folks like that. We are very familiar with what happened Hurricane Harvey, where, uh, we had the money that was allocated, and one of the local boards in Houston actually put some training in two weeks, which is similar to the NCCER. But the MC3 multi-craft core curriculum allows the individual to make their own decision on what path they wanna take. Because there is a distinction between the two training programs, but they're both short-term.
There, there's, there's some, there's some strength to the, your VR, meaning virtual reality, we have too many VRs, but, uh, uh, to your VR tool. I, I was, uh, um, probably in late 2019, I was on a, I was on a information trip up in, in Silicon Valley, and we were visiting different computer companies, looking at the ways that their, uh, training workers is what we were specifically. Anyway, we ended up in the office of one where they use, uh, virtual reality training, um, to give students, at least what it would look like in an operating room. So I, I, I put on the goggles, we were doing heart surgery that day.
Did he make it, Chairman?
And he made it.
Good.
I, I did pretty good work, according to the folks there, and, uh, but you know, you don't get the smell of the operating room. Um, it was real, I mean, there, I saw stuff I didn't wanna see, and I'm not a doctor for a reason. And so, uh, it, it was very realistic. I, I think if you could honestly, um, I think if you could honestly develop a tool where students could experience a little bit about, maybe not specific occupations, but certainly occupational fields. I think you could do them a favor at an early enough age that we could get them the education they needed. I, I definitely, it has merit and, and, and I, I for sure want that to be on the list, and we can have a discussion about dollars today, uh, and sort of figure out how that works. It, if you've.
I'm okay with that.
But if you've got your list out there, what I'd like to do is, is let Christopher Demerson have a chance to get his ideas on the list, and then let's sort of talk about them all together. Because I think my experience with this commission has been, that's how we do our best work, is when we sort of play off of each other's ideas and, and get some, some synergy going up here, so if, if, uh.
Sure, I'd just like to add that I agree with you, Chairman. Uh, I was in, uh, last week, we awarded a, um, a grant to Mary Ross's district, where the students at the high school at Baird ISD received VR goggles, headsets for training in a small community no bigger than, than Lockhart. And I thought that was amazing. The only other high school that I know of that has done something like that, the simulation, is in Rio Grande City. And so, congratulations to the board for doing that. And so, we've been having those discussions for some time. My trip to Emerson, Emerson, and some other employers where they've had these, um, headsets has made it. Um, I mean, you're right, it's like being there in person. But think about some of the training that we could implement, OSHA 10, OSHA 30. We could talk to parents about, maybe, and this is getting into Mahalia's area, but AEL, uh, speaking English, reading, writing, math, basic math. I think this is, especially for my co-located educational specialists that are out there, those people that are out there representing the agency, talking to these students, who knows what they could do with them. So, I appreciate your comments and, and your support on this. Commissioner Demerson?
Alright, so I think you guys already spoke to, to the balances that we have, and so I'll, I'll address these without dollar amounts, as you guys have brought up dollar amounts, but I, I'll do it without dollar amounts. Uh, connecting foster youth to employment, that, that's something that's important to me.
What was that again?
Connect foster youth, uh, in, to employment, but I'm gonna add in the folks with disabilities, uh, as well. And, um, uh, the number of the initiatives that I'm bringing out probably fall under some of these categories that we have here, and then we'll work back at, uh, any, any funding, uh, amounts or so. The other jobs y'all activate, reactivation of jobs y'all, we have some twos that are already out there. Uh, and so we need to really look at, uh, what's already, uh, available at the agency in terms of, uh, career apps, because I think we took a dive into that at one point. I'm not sure what, what's out there now, but I actually had, uh, an opportunity to use jobs y'all, the commercials that we developed a while back, and they're all tied to career pathways, uh, in addition to utilizing reality check, uh, and the like with some students, uh, today. And so that those twos are still very, um, well utilized and well accepted, uh, twos. And so, uh, jobs y'all, uh, either activation, reactivation, or building on it, and it probably will fall under some of these categories that have been expressed, uh, as, expressed here. Uh, the other is outreach efforts as well, and I haven't finally, hadn't, hadn't defined this clearly, but any outreach efforts that we might be able to do in collaboration, uh, with say, the governor's office, the economic development, and tourism team, as they do outreach efforts, or Robert Allen's group, uh, any outreach efforts along those lines. If there's anything that we can do, uh, to, uh, to play as an, an asset to what they're doing and looking to do, I wanna look at, uh, opportunities under that umbrella as well.
So I'm familiar with jobs y'all, but you mean, if you could, if I could ask you to give me some working parts to that. I know what it is, I know what it's supposed to do, but I, I, I could use a little more information on them.
Yeah, I know, let staff jump on that, but I, you know, basically, it was a, a marketing, an outreach campaign that we developed, uh, a while back, with commercials geared towards students, uh, in, in reaching the market in real time. And, and in other words, talk about making sure that that was, uh, available on, on laptops, on desktops, on where you had the ability to get it in real time. And so it was our agency's efforts to, to really move into that space. And so, I think apps were developed, I mean, there are a number of things that were developed around that, all steered towards career pathways and, uh, job, uh, job opportu, creating job opportunities and career pathways. The career pathways was the, uh, the main focus there. Courtney, you guys may wanna add, it came out of Tom's shop, uh, as well, so.
I do, and Tom McCarty is here. Courtney Arbore, workforce division, Tom is in the room and can come up and provide you an update. It was one-time funding that kicked off what you're talking about, Commissioner, but Tom can let you know what is still underway with that, with those dollars. And I will just tell you, in a separate initiative called Careers in Texas Interest Industries, that you all, um, have funded for the last few years, boards have funding to host events to introduce students to target and targeted occupations in their areas, and that often has a jobs y'all component, where they're trying to work with young people and do it in a way that's meaningful to them. But, so jobs y'all is primarily, I think, what, what Tom is about to share, but know that the, the boards helped to promote it as well.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Tom McCarty, external relations. Uh, the job y'all program, it was, uh, basically is a website with a series of videos that was designed to target, uh, kind of the middle school students around seventh, eighth grade, get them thinking about, um, careers that are projected to be in demand by the time they would be graduating. So, um, so we're looking forward about six years, seven years, so that way they can start thinking about those types of careers that would be available, uh, to them at that time. As far as what we're doing with it right now, we saw it, we had the website that was all transferred over to TWC, when the project ended and the funding ended, we closed that part out. So we continue to promote the website, update the, um, the jobs on the website, things of that nature that, that we're kind of projecting out, uh, but that's kinda where we're at right now.
Where, where'd the money come from?
It was, it was funded with WEOA funding.
Chairman, I have a question regarding jobs y'all. So, what is the engagement? I mean, who's using it? How many views has it had? I mean, what has been the response to that?
We've had a good response, and I know that the, uh, education outreach specialist uses it quite a bit. I would need to, as far as the analytics to the website, I'd need to pull that for you, and I can certainly, uh, work on doing that and getting back with you.
But that's something certainly we could incorporate, Tom, you and Courtney, your expertise on maybe these headsets. I mean, that's stuff that could be actually programmed, right, if we needed to. I mean, when you're saying the outreach specialist is using this stuff.
They use it, and they'll, they'll promote the website, they'll promote the, you know, the LNCI tool around jobs y'all, talking about the different occupations that are available out there and the ones that are in demand when they're, um, talking about the jobs y'all program.
Perfect. Yeah, if you can get those numbers, that'd be great.
Yes, sir.
So Commissioner Demerson, your interest in jobs y'all seems to be the spirit of jobs y'all, not the specific tool. If, if we need to make it better, we should consider that. Basically, we're trying to get whatever juice we can get out of that squeeze. We have a good tool that we think we've, we've gotten some benefit from, you wanna see more benefit from that tool, am I reading you right on?
You, you're reading me right, and I think it fits in line with, when I'm reading your information about required education in each pathway, including PTEC and early college, high school, community college, those, that type of information. It exists with jobs y'all, and the, and the, the agency putting money into it. And so I think you can get some juice out of a, an existing tool to fit as it relates to career pathways. We're talking, uh, that language, not specifically, um, reactivating the jobs y'all in its current stage, but looking at it and making sure that we're taking advantage of what we have there to make whatever we're proposing to do better.
Now, your interest in outreach, uh, you, you know, from experience, I share your interest in that. I, I do think the agency, um, probably doesn't, we're, we're not in, we're in all the right places, sometimes none at the exact right time, and I, I think we can probably do some work there. I don't, I, I, you may disagree with me on this, I, I cer, I a hundred percent agree with your interest in increasing our outreach. I'm not so sure that it's tied directly to WEOA and TANF funding, except that's our source of. I'm not so sure that it's tied directly to WEOA and TANF funding, except that's our source of money to do things. And so I I want to maybe just come back to that one because I have an idea. I want to float past you that I think might work for you. I do need to understand just a little bit more about your interest in foster youth. Is there something specific that we're not doing that you think we should be doing to connect foster youth to employment? Or you are you just, is this again, an enhancement of something that's already being done? I just need to understand that a little bit.
Yeah, understanding that basically with the white paper that you rolled out by trying to incorporate ideas under that connecting foster youth, folks with disability, disabilities, veterans, anything could fall under this umbrella. And so basically, anytime we have an opportunity to connect when we're putting these things out, if we need to be more specific towards that population base, then we take an opportunity to do so. And so I'm putting that on the record. Basically, if we're doing career pathways or whatever we're coming up with, the coaching, that's a different market. And so that's why we have separate programs for folks with disabilities, folks with foster care. That's why on a job application, there's a box that you check off for individuals like that. And so I'm saying when we're developing things or we're looking at potential programs, I want to make sure that we're connecting foster youth, folks with disability to employment opportunities. That's not to say that we aren't doing that, because some of the things that we have mentioned down here, we're doing, we're looking at trying to enhance them. And so I want to move in that direction.
So I'm gonna put what you just told me in my own words, and then you tell me if I got it right. So your interest here is just making sure that whatever we're doing, that there is always an added focus on populations of Texans that we want to ensure don't get overlooked. In this instance, we're talking about foster youth because it's a large measurable group with whom we already do a lot of work, very worthy work that I've participated in or continue to have just paid in. And I think the same could be true for Texans who have any number of kinds of disabilities. It's a group that could easily be sort of overlooked and we just want to make sure that we want to do that. I'm not, I'm not hearing you advocate for any specific activity or some specific program, just that we be, although we wouldn't preclude that, but you're not really advocating for that right now. You're at this point saying, let's just make sure whatever we do, that we have a focus for these groups that that really might require a little bit extra attention just because of the circumstances they find themselves in.
Right, right. That's that's probably ninety-eight percent there. And the other part would be that if, as we are not addressing dollar amounts right now, in that standpoint, I want to make sure that it is on on the table and out there so that if there's anything special or something that we may come up that we may be in a position to, it may come and it may turn into more than just information that's out here and a group that we're addressing. It may turn into a program or so.
So so I've got a, I've got a list of items here. Chris Alvarez has put three items, although we share an item. So he has two, and I have what I have, and then metrics one we share. And then Christopher Demerson has put three items on the list. At this point in the discussion, let me say this. So I am probably success for me today would be more defined by our ability to draw a sort of bold line around a box that we're going to call ending the middle skills gap. It can contain any number of tools. As we enter into this dollar amount discussion, you will find that I am more interested in coming away today with the agency making a very significant commitment under the heading specifically of ending the middle skills gap. I think we can be a leader nationally with this. I think we can work off of tools that we already have that I haven't mentioned today because they are funded right now. Take these new tools, really make a dent in this middle skills gap, do a lot of good for both the workforce and employers in the state. So I purposefully didn't put any dollar amounts other than I I have an estimate of what staff thought some of their stuff would cost. I have an idea of what a couple of these others would cost, which is how I arrived at eleven million dollars. So I have some flexibility in in dollar amounts because my interest lies almost as much as standing up this bold initiative that we can continue to add to over the years as it does any one specific program here. I may have even suggested some programs that are a little ahead of their time that we can't get to in the next twelve months. And so I'm sort of realistic about where we are. Now, Chris Alvarez, you offered some very, two very specific ideas. I, on their face, I I'm in agreement with both ideas. We just got to make the money fit. Mr. Demerson, while your ideas are somewhat similar to mine in the sense that they capture kind of a broader kind of thing, you clearly have some, some, some priorities in mind in terms of of how you would pay for those and function those. That's a long diplomatic government way of saying, I I know I need eleven million dollars to make my deal work, but I would love to incorporate some of the things that you're talking to and into my heading of ending the middle skills gap. Even though those programs can stand on their own, will stand on their own, probably should stand on their own. You know, I think they fit within my category. And so I'm not really thinking today of seven million dollars for Brian and six million dollars for Commissioner Alvarez and seven million dollars for Commissioner Demerson. I'm sort of thinking about, can I leave here today with a commitment to have the agency put our considerable talent and resources toward ending the middle skills gap? At the same time, fund some of the concepts that you have that I think make, in the case of the VR goggles, both short and long-term difference, case of short-term training for for parents of kids and subsidized care, I think a little bit shorter term, but still nonetheless impactful. Jobs y'all and outreach components of yours, Commissioner Demerson, I think play a big role in that. And then honestly, I I hear what you're saying and I'm, we're just, we just need to be committed to be mindful of always including foster youth and and vocational revolutions, some of the things. So let's talk about money. Let's talk about how we would put the dollars and just wanted you to kind of understand my feelings today because there are some specific things that I know need to be funded in the middle skills gap. But I I'm also willing to let staff kind of figure out what stuff's actually going to cost based off not an estimate, but a but a bid and and do some things like that. So let's let's open the discussion on that and see where we are in terms of the available money.
So Chairman, when I laid out my initiatives or ideas, it was all with WEOA. And again, I hadn't even touched TANF. I'd be willing to to allow the chairman to fund some of the programs and ideas that he has to get to that close to the eleven million. I mean, like I said, I don't have a problem using TANF money. We hadn't even talked about that. So if that's okay with you, Chairman, I mean, the money that I was that I was proposing that I would use to fund some of these programs or ideas would be coming out of WEOA. But like the headsets, I would have no problem tapping into the TANF statewide funding balance. Again, everything we discussed was WEOA. We didn't even talk about TANF. And so I'd be willing to negotiate. We could get to the number that you're looking at. And again, because there are some ideas that you and I both share in this, we may be able to even incorporate some of that eleven million that you're talking about. My idea is just more of the specifics on what that money is going to be used for, like headsets, which people in capital or borderplex or in Rio Grande Valley, everybody could use those. It's just an idea. My out, you know, the the boards being able to have the flexibility to purchase the headsets, the the career outreach specialist as well, being able to use that as a tool. Keep in mind that many of the things that we are laying out, Commissioner Demerson, we always keep foster youth and of course, our folks in VR, people with a disability in mind. That's why I think this these outreach specialists play such a key role in what we do because they share the programs and the services that the agency provides, whether you're in foster and so or programs that provide apprenticeship like Nicholas Morgan's program focusing on foster youth, military service transitioning veterans. So I hadn't even touched the TANF, but I'd be willing to use, spend some of the money. And I'd also be willing to to allow staff to have more money for some of the areas that they were looking at for consideration, which you laid out here. I would be even willing to negotiate the four million. Heck, I could probably do three. You know, again, these would be first time things. I'd even be willing to do two, Commissioner, Chairman, just so that we could get more in line with some of the ideas that you have and anything that Commissioner Demerson would possibly be bringing forth as well.
Okay, thank you for that. Commissioner Demerson, did you have some dollar amounts you were thinking about for these, just so we can start?
I really don't. I think I think the outreach efforts, maybe two million dollars or so. And that's pretty much it.
Okay. Okay. Let me see if this is going to work. So so Commissioner Alvarez specifically, you know, and something you didn't mention, Commissioner Alvarez, that I'm thinking there's a cost associated with. So the headsets are great. But if you don't have the, if you don't have the underlying software that powers the experience, there's a development cost to that as well. We're going to have to do that at the state level so that there's some continuity between that. Here, here's here, here's what I might suggest. There's fifteen million between WEOA and TANF, right?
That's correct.
Just under sixteen.
Just under sixteen.
Yes.
So it's a range between.
No, no range.
He hadn't said that yet. I'm I'm proud of him. So if if we asked staff to go assign realistic dollar amounts to everything in my proposal, I think they have some idea based on some conversations I've had with them. I don't know that we are at, you know, we're certainly not at the bid stage, so that could change a little bit. I would say if we looked at this in terms of two million to VR, two million to training of less than three months, two million to sort of revitalize the outreach efforts and the jobs y'all reactivation. I would leave nine million for the things that are contained in my ending the middle skills gap concept. It would let me get my concept advanced and start some of these tools toward working. I I think our course of action today might be if if if, and we can discuss this as needed, but I think our course of conversation today might be to pass out the, to pass out to to move out of this work session so that staff can begin on it, for the commission to take action on these specific items that we've all laid out. Maybe the dollar amounts that I just suggested. And let staff flesh this out and try to give us a real understanding of of what that costs. How many people would two million dollars help in terms of of parents of students who are in subsidized childcare in terms of short-term training? And how much would two million really do in terms of jobs y'all and outreach efforts? I I do, Chris, I still firmly believe that we can pick up the spirit of the of working with foster youth and others into, and then Christopher Alvarez, of course, you you've already confirmed to me that our shared interest in metrics can advance under this this particular plan. So I'm gonna do this backwards. We can still make this work within proper parliamentary procedure, but but the motion I would make is to approve the two items that Commissioner Alvarez advanced, the one shared item that I have in mind, all of the rest of my items, and the three items that Commissioner Demerson, to approve those concepts as as really the priorities of the commission at this time. And then with an eye toward two million for the headsets, two million for the short-term training, two million for the outreach and jobs y'all efforts. And then nine million for the remainder of the things on my list to take action on that today. Give that to staff, find out what survives the money and bring that back for sort of some sort of final ratification that this is what we're going to be able to do within the money and this is what's going to happen. And then I will make a commitment today, if if that motion ends up becoming acceptable, I'll make a commitment that I'll take, I'll take the haircut out of my list of things if if we come up short on the money or we need to do something, you know, put a little more money somewhere else. So that that is sort of how I see the path to to completion on this item, but I'd love to hear any any additional thoughts you might have on it.
You're gonna cut your hair?
No, I was a figure of speech.
If I find more money, can you, will you cut your hair? Looks great, though.
I like it the way it is.
Well, there is more money. If I'm not mistaken. According to the six sixteen twenty-one TWC recovery report, we still have one point two million left over from IKEA. So there's your additional money.
We're discussing statewide initiatives right now. I thought we were discussing WEOA and TANF. I didn't know we were looking at other resources.
We're looking at resources that we untapped or unused.
So I I, and there may be other resources within the agency as well. I, just out of fairness to staff, let's have them work on what I just said. And then also in the course of that discussion, identify potential other sources of money for for our further consideration. Does that work?
I would be okay with that.
Definitely.
Just so that that doesn't go unspent.
Okay, do I? So I sufficiently stated my motion. I'm willing to restate that if we need to for general counsel's purposes or for any any commissioner. I stated the intent of my motion. Let me, let me just do it again. I I move that this commission instruct staff to take up the list, including the white paper entitled in ending the middle skills gap through comprehensive career pathways committed by, presented by Chairman Daniel. The virtual reality goggles project and the training of less than three months project advanced by Commissioner Alvarez, the jobs y'all reactivation, the outreach efforts, and the connecting of foster youth and Texans with disabilities to employment concepts advanced by Commissioner Demerson. I would ask that staff give us a a realistic cost estimate for implementing each of these items. Considering two million dollars for the goggles, two million dollars for the training of less than three months, two million dollars for the jobs y'all reactivation and outreach efforts with the remaining approximately nine million dollars to the list contained in the white paper. And at the same time, identify potential other sources of money that could be used to this. That would be the motion that I would make.
I would second that motion. And if staff needs any clarification, we'd be more to provide that.
So it's been moved in second. Any further consideration? If there's no objections, we'll just, we'll just vote that right now. We can take a vote if you want to. I don't want to pressure anybody into anything. If there's no objection, we'll advance that. We'll let staff work on that with the additional instruction. As soon as you've completed your list of of what things are going to cost, that you you obviously bring that back to a commission meeting for final action so that we can see those dollar amounts. Things could change, and I just want to leave a little bit of room for that. And I think we can take this up at a regular commission meeting as a single actionable item. So with no objection, objection. Okay, Courtney. Did we give you everything you needed? Do you need something else from us right now?
We have what we need. Thank you.
What did you say?
And just as a reminder, this is the twenty twenty-one balances. So twenty twenty-two, we'll have additional funding for some of the other programs. So that's next week, but we'll, we'll work with the guidance you've given us today.
Chairman, for the record, Chris Nelson, Chief Financial Officer, just to make sure I'm clear, I I've got all the 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 requests. What I'm hearing is a kind of are you expecting a comprehensive kind of allocation distribution to all workforce areas? This isn't some kind of competitive thing. It's just, we need to do the math behind the scenes to figure out what what each one of these things costs. And then you're expecting some kind of distribution that would be made available to all areas.
That's an excellent question. So so some of my items would not be an allocation at all. It would be a a a function that took place here. I I could.
Aside from the procurement, like on the the apps and things like.
Yeah, yeah. So I I don't know the answer to your question because I don't know what Commissioner Alvarez intended on either the goggle project or the short-term training. And although I believe Christopher Demerson's jobs y'all and his outreach efforts would be statewide, we probably do need to clear that up right now.
I would say allocation would be appropriate for an RFA.
For the short term training?
Yeah. For all of them, all of my ideas. Short term.
Right.
VR goggles.
Right.
Some boards may not already have them. Mary Ross may already have them. Frank Almaraz. Some boards may not be, have access to broadband. I would say the allocation for goggles would be a good idea, and especially we talked about the career explore, the outreach specialist that would be a direct. Allocation.
I'm sorry to interrupt. For the record, Ed Serna, Executive Director, TWC. I completely understand that we wanna heavily engage the boards. I would, uh, request the commissions in Belgium to let us in the evaluation of all of these. Determine whether it may be better for us to execute a statewide contract for distribution of things to the boards. Because if we distribute money, some of the smaller boards are gonna get a smaller allocation, and they may not be able to buy as much equipment. They will use the VR goggles as an example, whereas we can probably execute a single contract for a larger number that would be more cost effective. And then we can distribute the equipment. So if you'll give us the flexibility on, on an allocation and not simply. Uh, cuz Krista does a good job on, on developing the allocations, but I'm afraid just the way the models work, some of our smaller boards might end up getting. Uh, having less funds to be able to do less things. This will give us the opportunity.
I'm okay with that.
So, so the motion is passed gives, uh, actually flexibility to staff to do exactly that. I don't think you need anything additional from us. Uh, Christian Alvarez, since he agrees with that.
I agree.
Christian Demerson doesn't seem like he's objected.
I agree. We, we added other resources to the list. I mean, the way that this lays out, we're not sure where to land. Some of them may, or they, some of them may not be.
So, so when you bring that back in the next couple of weeks to the commission meeting, just tell us what's gonna be the best thing. We may debate it at that time. I doubt it, but we may debate it at that time, but, but let's do it that way.
Ed, and if I may ask, will you reach out to the outreach specialists? I guess it would be Lori and I, right?
It's a will engage staff. It will be something that, that this group does.
Great.
A willing, we'll engage staff. It just gives us the opportunity to determine, and I'll use the metrics contract that we executed. Uh, last year, that's a good example of doing that statewide. Let us, uh, provide a whole lot more than if we had distributed those funds, uh, to the boards. But some of the boards wouldn't have had enough purchasing power to have a vendor even pay attention to them.
I'm okay with that, Chairman. I'm okay with that, Ed. Great idea.
Sorry to interrupt.
All right. Anything else on agenda item one? I think we've covered it. Let's move then to agenda item two. This is discussion, there is possible action. This is a L things. Um, I similarly have a white paper on AEL. Um, you guys just wanna follow the same format we just.
We could.
Yeah.
I feel okay with that, Chairman.
All right. Let me. Let me lay out this. This one's much shorter. Similarly, there's, there's papers at the, at the desk if you'd like to look at it. Um, so I, I picked up our conversation that we had. Whenever that was where we talked about, uh, an innovation fund for AEL. I picked it up and brought it forward. Um, I brought with that, uh, a couple of items that I picked up from a staff discussion that, that captured my attention. Uh, so you see on my list, uh, integrated education and, and training activities for folks that are in the correctional system that are. Here, come out, pretty important stuff. Um, employer engagement, I don't, uh, I have up to two million budgeted because, uh, frankly, we won't never ever do enough. In that area to get it all done. So whatever we can do in terms of employer engagement. Um, I hope that we'll be able to do that. And then I, I did pick up the continued the idea of the AEL Innovation Fund. Uh, that we tabled the last time we talked about it. Um, two awards, two hundred thousand, up to two hundred thousand a piece for a total of four hundred thousand. So, um, my budget for this list of items for AEL would be seven hundred fifty thousand for the, for the IET to get started on that. Uh, two million on employer engagement and up to four hundred thousand. Um, which I think takes us pretty close to the, to the available balance. What is that? About three point one million or so on my list. So, um, that's the extent of my list. Um, I, I can definitely, uh, discuss in any detail anything on there. But I think, I think all three of these are familiar to you guys, and I'll, I'll spare you extra words if, uh, if we can here today. So again, uh, just a summary, if there's anything else you wanna know, I'm happy to answer that, but I'd love to hear your ideas as well.
Can we clarify what the balance is? Outstanding RFA.
For, uh, uh, adult ed, it's three point seven million.
Okay. So I have a couple of ideas is that, and I agree with the chairman on some of these items. And again, it might be just the specifics on how we would use the funding. And so for job preparedness, including short term training and upskilling. Um, I was asking, and of course, we can negotiate on the amount. Uh, I had proposed one million for a pre-apprenticeship bridge program to provide. Uh, remedial education for applicants to the building trades apprenticeship program who need remedial math instruction in math. A perfect example of that is. In some of our apprenticeship programs around the state, one of the biggest barriers of getting entry into a program. Is that many of these individuals do not know how to read a tape measure. And so we have data that shows that hundreds of students apply to go to these schools. And unfortunately, because of their lack of, of math or their, their deficiency in math, many of the students are not. Entered into some of these programs as a result of not being able to read a simple tape measure. So what I'm asking here is for the remedial type of programs to be, uh, funded. So that we can help these individuals get into these programs. And again, it may fit into specifically what the chairman has laid out on integrated education and training. I agree with him on the integrated education and training IET in correctional state, uh, leadership funds. Specifically for that program, I'd like to provide literature, and I'm not even sure if this is gonna cost any money. This might be something Courtney may be able to negotiate and Mahalia with the boards. Provide literature regarding TWC and workforce solution services for correctional facilities for transitioning inmates. I was at Lockhart Women's Prison. Young lady had a baby. No literature on where some of the services that she would be eligible for. Childcare. Tana funding. Did she qualify for SNAP? Could she qualify for any of our resources that we have? So what I'd like to see, if this is, I think is the appropriate time, and if there's a fiscal note to it or a financial amount that we need to allocate. I'd be willing to, you know, negotiate that, but I don't think there is. And all I would want Chairman and Commissioner Demerson is for the, just like you were talking about in marketing, is for some of our services that we provide to our claimants around the state. To be provided to inmates behind bars. That's it. English and Spanish, if that's okay. The initiative that I'd like to talk about next would be on particularly on the family literacy initiative. Let me talk about. I would like to propose. And this is just the amount that I had, I was looking at. We could negotiate. I would like to propose one million to expand math assistant call center. To the family of an AEL participant, so that if a child requires math tutoring and their parents are engaged in an AEL service. The child can also access the, the math call center. So we do provide that service now for parents, math tutoring. But if the child is there with the parent, no reason why they can't just transfer the phone and let the child be a part of the discussion with the tutorial. Or with the tutor that's available. Just an idea. My last one would be one million in state leadership funding to support curriculum development for AEL customers. Training and construction trains. This would be a developing and disseminating curricula, including curricula incorporating the essential components of reading instruction. As such components relate to adults, developing content and models for integrated education and training and career pathways. We could also look at dual language on that. So those were the ones, and I'd be willing to negotiate those for just some ideas, Chairman. That as we relayed out earlier, that maybe we could incorporate together on some of the things that. These are just specifics on what I'd like to use the money for. That's really it.
All right. Thank you, sir. Pressure, Demerson.
Yeah, I think what's laid out, what you've laid out is fine. A particular interest to me is employment engagement and that two million that we have there is where our land.
Okay, uh, thank you, sir. We've got, uh, we've got three point seven million to work with. Um, by my estimate, we've laid out about. Six million in items. Can't use the word haircut anymore. So now we gotta look for actual cuts. Right. I don't think there's anything on here that from a concept, not a dollar amount, from a concept that I, I don't think would be beneficial to, to some Texans. Christian Demerson, do you? Do you feel the same way? Is there anything you, you don't like that's on the list?
No, I think what we've laid out is fine.
Christian Alvarez, everything on the list. Nothing needs to come off the list. Okay. So I, uh. I heard you say, Commissioner Alvarez, you, you definitely, um. Were okay with what I had laid out in terms of IET. I had seven hundred and fifty thousand. You, you thought your concept might be less costly cuz it was really more about materials. Let me, um, let me do this. On employer engagement, this is something I drew from a real brief set of staff notes. Uh, do, do you have an idea of what our needs are in terms of employer engagement, in terms of a dollar amount from, from where you said? I said two million cuz I always think that's important, but it could be two hundred million. It probably wouldn't be enough. I mean, so we'll, we'll have to do what we can do here.
Uh, good afternoon, Commissioners. For the record, Mahalia Baldini, Adult Education and Literacy. Um, in terms of the dollar amount, maybe some, some feedback or just some discussion about what we're really thinking about in terms of this initiative. Um, right now, our general core grantees, we have thirty-seven contracts statewide. This is something that they can currently do with their allocation. What we're really looking at doing with this initiative is to build a quality model. Um, so many of our state leadership activities that involve students, and we want to sort of expand these models. We wanna come up with quality models that then can go back to those core grantees and say, this is sort of how you do it. This is what the curriculum looks like. This is how you really work with an employer to develop those progress milestones. Um, so with that being said, um, two million sounds like a good number. It's a good number to put out there. We'll get a lot of applicants. Um, I think for this money, it was actually one of the feedback that we had received from our providers is something they really wanted to do. Um, so I don't know if that helps you with your, with your.
Well, really not at all cuz you agreed with me that two million was a good number, but we don't have that much money. So now you're saying basically, hey, Brian, now, now, now do your job and figure out where the money is going. I hear you. I'm, I'm just. Hard time. Um. Uh, working off of my list. So. I, I kinda had in my mind that employer engagement was one thing and that the AEL Innovation Fund was, was really more of an instructional thing. Uh, in the interest of money, though, I, I could probably. Um, move the, the AEL Innovation Fund up into employer engagement and just look for innovative ways to, to deal with the employer engagement. Probably save some money that way. Um, so that's a, that's a, a, a way I think we can get a little closer to, to getting this done for the money. Um, Christian Alvarez, it, it would strike me that, um. The one million dollar that you've advanced for your pre-apprenticeship, uh, job preparedness section. And your, your. Curriculum development training, uh, for construction trades. Would be similar in the sense that, I mean, a million dollars would be great, but if we don't have that much money, it, it seems somewhat scalable to me. Maybe, and maybe the same thing could be said for the, for the family literacy initiative that, that while, just like I feel a million dollars or two million dollars is ideal for employer engagement. I understand that that's scalable and that, that really we just need to probably work our way up from the bottom. Um, if I'm inaccurate in my assumption here. Um, please tell me so I can, I can do a better job of trying to, to find some common ground here for the dollar amounts. I'm not suggesting we cut it to any one thing. I just think it can be cut if it needs to be cut and still be able to have the initiative.
Sure. I, I think I had proposed a million. Was that a little too much?
Well, I, so we, we're, we're in the enviable position of we all like all the ideals that have been advanced.
I agree.
About like seven million dollars worth of stuff that we got three point seven million dollars to spend on.
Chairman, I would be willing to negotiate that again. Again, this is just because of the remedial math that's really needed for some of these programs. Um, and because it's a first time, I mean, I, I'd be willing to negotiate that to five hundred thousand.
Okay. Let me ask you a question. Um, and, and is it a, um. Is it a literacy issue or a practical application issue? You gave the example of not being able to read a tape measure. Is it, is it, is it numerical illiteracy? We just, we just unfortunately have an individual who hasn't had the right kind of education, or they, they don't have the functional ability to read a tape measure.
They just can't do fractions.
I see.
And again, some of these individuals that are looking at going into these programs are right out of high school, not to put blame on anyone. And some of them are adult learners that haven't done math in forever. And so unfortunately, a lot of students just don't know how to do fractions. Bottom line.
Understood.
But I'd be willing to negotiate, Chairman, from the one million to five hundred thousand?
What's the bottom line on, uh, we, we may come up from this, but what would be your bottom line on family literacy and curriculum development? Uh, you started at a million. How far downward do you think you could conceive of?
I'd be willing to do five hundred thousand as well.
So they're, they're all viable roughly then?
Mm-hmm. Two for one.
What does that get, uh, that down to?
Yeah, I'm stuck with Texas Tech math. Somebody else probably ought to add this.
Where would that leave your request? If you reduce down to?
Well, if, if he, if he reduced all of his requests, I'm not saying we, we have to. But if we took him down to five hundred thousand, that's one point five for the three, and then the IET. Um, I had it at seven hundred and fifty thousand. If we took it to five hundred thousand also just for this exercise. That's a two million, and that leaves us one point seven for employer engagement. Um, and then I, as I said, I'm, I'm willing to bury the innovation fund back up in the employer engagement. We can just consider that at, at zero for purposes of this exercise. Um, or we could, uh, so I took IET to, to five hundred. We could restore it to seven hundred and fifty thousand. Cuz that, that, I think all three of us sort of agreed on that. And then if we take the employer engagement down to.
Chairman, Courtney Arbore, we're First Division. Can I just jump in on the employer engagement piece? I don't know if we answered you directly earlier, but because we're just looking for a model, we could, we were thinking around four hundred thousand per grant. And we could do three or four, uh, awards to, to have them build out a model that we could then try to replicate.
So one point two million?
Or one point six, if you wanted three or four awards.
All right.
You think your math is bad, man? I'm already running out of paper.
No.
So.
I'm.
But I am okay with reducing the amounts that I had proposed. Um, because I know Commissioner Demerson last week also talked about the award, and you know, we certainly don't wanna forget about that. So I'd be okay with my initiatives going five hundred thousand dollars each instead of the million. If that works with staff and with the commission.
So that's one, one point five from Commissioner Alvarez, right?
So.
One point.
If, if job preparedness, pre-apprenticeship, family literacy, curriculum development, training all came at five hundred thousand, if we did. So that's one point five. And they're broadcasting my math skills out to the world right now. Um, and then if we say seven hundred fifty thousand for IET, see where this takes us. So that's two point two. And so that leaves about one point five. What if we did this?
Commissioner, I just wanted to make a quick note also, Courtney Arbore, our First Division, for the record, the math call center, the, the idea that you proposed about the, the children being able to access that also, family literacy is an allowable activity, we need to work with legal to ensure that this activity would meet the definition of a family literacy activity, but we are, we, we will work on that and get back with you. So if, if you want to settle on a dollar amount, but just knowing that we need to do a little more research on that.
That's fine. And again, lowering it to 500,000 is fine with me.
Okay. So I think we come in under budget if we do 750,000 to IET, 500,000 to job preparedness, pre-apprenticeship, Christian Alvarez's concept, 500,000 to Christian Alvarez's Family Literacy Initiative and the Math Systems Call Centers, we just heard a little bit about that, 500,000 curriculum development training for construction trades, I believe you said.
That's correct.
That should let us get to 1.2 million for employer engagement. And then again, I was operating under the assumption that we would, we would sort of wave off the AEL Innovation Fund and, and just look for innovations in employer engagement. Did I come in under budget, Chris?
I believe, so, so you lowering the employer engagement to 1.2 million? Then yes, I believe you would be within the balance.
So Commissioner Demerson, you and I were having a robust conversation a few days ago on the AEL Innovation Fund, which you know I supported, but in this instance, in light of all these activities, I, I could forego that one in favor of some of these others, which I think have merit.
So the innovation fund that we were discussing last week, that was tied to the, the same funding source. And so we're at 1.2 for employer engagement, if we're at 1.2 with employer engagement, we're, we're made whole at that point. Employer engagement at 1.2, Commissioner Alvarez's initiative is at 1.5, and then the integrated education and training at 750,000. That totals-
Say that again, Commissioner.
So, so the integrated education and training dollar amount, that's 750,000. I think the proposals that were laid out by Commissioner Alvarez, that totals 1.5.
Correct.
And then the employment engagement, we're looking at 1.2. And what's that total?
3.4.
3.4, all right. And, and what's our allocation, 3.7?
Yes, 3.7 is the balance.
Okay.
And I'll double check on the, the innovation fund, because there was, I, I believe, weren't we transferring funds set aside for the awards to?
That's what I thought.
I, I need to double check to make sure that, that, that your proposal isn't necessarily coming out of that, or the full amount isn't coming out of that 3.7 million, but I'll double check.
That's what I, I thought it was a separate pile, but, so we're at 3.2, and we have 3.7. So we have a little bit left over.
And that leaves a little cushion if we find out something might be a bump or something.
Yeah.
I still, yeah, I'm okay with that.
All right, let me restate this in the form of a motion.
And can, before you do that, Chairman, can I just want to make one point clear? And it's, it's one that didn't require amount, Courtney, and I was wondering if you and staff could assist me, again, reiterating the value of having our information disseminated or distributed to inmates behind bars. I don't think there's a cost to that, but I thought it was appropriate for me to mention that during this discussion night area or this time, and so I just wanted to make that clear. No money involved in that, Chairman, it's just having literature in English and Spanish to inmates behind bars, Lockhart, Gatesville, Huntsville, all that.
Yeah, I'm sorry, no objection.
Okay.
Chairman, let me bring this up. So if we find out that the allocation for awards was separate from this, this 3.7, we, we still have 500,000 on the table here. And so I don't know if we want to do anything with that, or we'll have time to come back to do something with it if we find out that they're two separate piles.
I, so, you know, the, the item here that doesn't get taken up is the innovation fund. If we find out that the award money was not included in this balance, we can bring back up the innovation fund. Or, or we can simply look to supplement the money in one of the ones that we've already funded. I, I, I'm more comfortable leaving a little bit of a balance, just you never know what happens when you actually bid it out and you get the bids back. So I'm, I'm always in favor, any of these could accept more money the minute we wanted to put it in there.
Okay, I agree.
All right, so I move, we, we, on, on, from the AEL allocation fund on this list, 750,000 to integrated education and training and corrections, 1.2 million for employer engagement, 500,000 for job preparedness, which is the pre-apprenticeship program that Commissioner Alvarez outlined, 500,000 to the Family Literacy Initiative for Math Systems Call Centers that Commissioner Alvarez outlined, 500,000 for the curriculum development training in the construction trades, there was more to it, but it's, it's what you outline, and that's my motion.
Second. You have a unanimous?
It is unanimous. Is there any other order of business come before the commission work session?
None here, Chairman.
Good.
Well, we do need a motion to adjourn.
Chairman, I move, we, we adjourn.
Second-
It has been moved to second to adjourn, and we are adjourned, gentlemen, thank you very, very much.
Thank you, sir.